...of recent employee death.
We're asking for a moment of silence in honor of Liz Stone. Liz served as the registrar for Henry County. And quite honestly, I don't know the exact number because it seems like she's always been here. She was an interesting lady with whom to work. You could have an aggressive raised voice arguing with her, and then 20 seconds later, she's telling you a joke and everybody laughs. But she was absolutely dedicated to the election process. And a story that was told at her service, Liz had been ill for quite a while, had not been in the office, or had not been a major presence in the office for a couple of months. But one of the duties of the registrar each election day is to officially close the polls. And Liz, from her home, typed a text message and asked her granddaughter to press send at 7:00. And that text message was, "By the power vested in me, all polls in Henry County are now closed." She took her duty seriously, literally, to the very last second. And it was an honor to work with her. I know each of you as candidates encountered her and dealt with her. No one was more dedicated to their craft than Liz Stone.
Let's have this moment of silence, please. Our heaven and father, we're so appreciative of those that we've crossed paths with in our lives, whether it be in the workplace, in the community, that have truly had an effect on others around them. We thank you for the positive things that we think about these individuals, specifically Liz Stone, and the positive effect that she had on the elections of Henry County and those that are serving. We thank you for her service. We thank you for her dedication. We ask now that as we enter this meeting today, that we have your blessings upon the meeting. And whatever said and done here today might be pleasing to you and a benefit to our community. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call a 3:00 PM session of the November 24th, 2020 Meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of the meeting to be placed on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. Again, welcome everyone. We will begin with Agenda Item Number Five, Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the items of consent be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Six, A Report on the Delinquent Tax Collection Efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grunstaff. Welcome.
Good afternoon. This is our report for the month ending in October 30th, 2020. Personal property collection, as of October 30th, we had collected 93.86% of the 2019 personal property tax. The amount collected during the month was $81,882. Real estate collection, as of October 30th, we had collected 95.52% of the 2019 real estate tax. Amount collected during the month was $176,889. Since the 1st of January, 2020, TACS has collected $851,910. And through our debt set-off program, we have collected an additional $151,140. And so far, in November, there have been two stops collected. Since our last meeting, the personal property bills were mailed out, like November 12th. So all that should be out. And my office is busy collecting taxes for us. And I think our next judicial sale will be planned sometime in January.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions with Mr. Grunstaff?
Taxes late getting out? I mean, I've had several calls complaining about not getting them on time and going to have to be due within a couple of weeks after they've got them.
Yeah, they were later going out this year.
Any other questions? Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, A Consideration of Projects for the Regional Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, known as the SEDS. Dr. Mr. Hall.
Each year, the West Piedmont Regional Economic Development District, which serves Henry, Patrick, Franklin, and Pennsylvania Counties, as well as the cities of Marshall and Danville and the town of Rocky Mountain, compiles an updated Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDS, list. The plan will be forwarded to the U.S. Department of Economic Development Administration to maintain the eligibility of our localities to receive EDA funding. The document must contain a list of prioritized projects. And the planning district annually requests that each locality submit its proposed future projects. It is essential that all projects the board will consider within the next year be included in the SEDS document because only projects on the list are eligible for EDA funding. County staff developed the attached proposed list of projects, including a project in the SEDS does not commit the county to undertake that project. It is merely a listing of potential projects from which EDA representatives choose for investment of federal funds in the district. If the EDA invites the county to submit an application for a specific project on this list, the board will then be required to commit the local funds necessary for the implementation. And you have in your working papers an attachment of this year's draft SEDS list. And we ask that you consider approval of this list.
What's the pleasure of the board in regard to approval of this SEDS list?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve the list of projects for submission in the regional CEDS.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Eight, We'll Take Up Financial Matters, Beginning with an Award of Contract Referencing Patrol Vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to award the following contracts for vehicles. First, to RK Chevrolet in Virginia Beach for one 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe to be used by the Patrol Division at a cost of $37,603.03. Second contract to Hall Automotive in Virginia Beach for two Dodge Durango SUVs at $37,620.12 each, and four Dodge Chargers at $32,736.94 each. These vehicles will be used by the Patrol Division and the Court Security Division. The total contract award amount is $238,924.82. Pricing is based on the Virginia Sheriff's Association Vehicle Procurement Program and specs. And the board approved funding for this purchase in the FY '21 county budget as a carryover from the previous budget. And Sheriff Perry is here, should you have any questions.
In regards to the awarding of this contract, what action does the board want to take?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to award contracts to RK Chevrolet in the amount of $37,603.03 and Hall Automotive in the amount of $238,924.82, as outlined above.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight-D, A Consideration of Resolution Referencing the Signature Authority of the Jail Inmate Fund for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to approve the attached resolution to update the jail inmate fund's signature authority. The jail inmate fund comprises cash, compiles cash on inmates of the Henry County Jail at the time of their arrest or contributions to them from their family member. These funds can only be used for the health and welfare of specific county inmates. Granting signature authority to specific sworn law enforcement personnel will ensure the sheriff's office can effectively conduct day-to-day transactions related to the jail inmate fund. You have an attachment from Sheriff Perry which lists the proposed signature approvals. And again, Sheriff Perry is with us, should you have any questions.
In regard to this resolution, what action does the board wish to take?
Mr. Chairman, I may be we approve the proposed resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight-C, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Grant Funds for the Broadband Planning Study. Mr. Hall.
Henry County has been awarded two separate grants to cover the cost of a broadband planning study. The primary grant of $50,000 is from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. This grant requires a $10,000 match. The second grant of $15,000 is from the Harvest Foundation to cover the required matching funds in that first grant and other associated costs. The study will identify broadband service gaps in both the county and the city of Martinsville and provide a roadmap for addressing the gaps. If you have any questions about this process, Mr. Wagner has been our appointment on this, so he can answer any questions you may have.
In regard to the approval of the appropriation, what is the pleasure of this?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the appropriation of $50,000 from the Department of Housing and Community Development and $15,000 from the Harvest Foundation to cover the costs associated with conducting a broadband planning study.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
How does this compare to what we just approved with the last mile broadband expansion? And it may not intersect at all for $17 million for the Regional Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy piece?
So this is just a plan and study grant. This $65,000 cumulatively will be used to hire consultant to take a look at broadband services in Henry County and the city of Marshall to identify where there are gaps in service, whether it be no service at all or less than was determined to be broadband capable for school-aged children. Financial concerns will also be addressed if there's, you know, issues with distance from roadways, things that cost a lot of money to reach those last mile efforts.
Does it intersect?
That's all the $65,000 will do, is develop a plan how we go forth. So once we identify that, then we anticipate it costing up to $17 million to address those gaps that will be identified and where they're at. So that's why that is included in the SEDS document with the hopes of getting future dollars to fix the problem once we identify where all the problems are.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight-D, A Request for Carryover of FY '20 County Funds. Mr. Hall.
Staff is asking the board to approve the carryover of committed funds from the FY '20 budget year to the current FY '21 budget. Staff has prepared the attached list of carryover items by cost center. Items on the carryover list are committed items encumbered or obligated from the prior budget year, but the item was not received or the service was not performed prior to June 30. It also includes unexpended grant funds that may have been awarded in the prior fiscal year and other commitments not completed prior to June 30. This year's carryover request totals $76,778,757.77, which includes inter-fund transfers of $4,247,783.91. And Mr. Jones is here, should you have any questions about this item.
Thank you. Again, the board has a significant amount of background material with the cost centers, with the majority of it, being with a detention project probably totaling close to $59 million on that. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to the approval of the carryover funds to the FY '21?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the board approved the carryover funds fiscal year '21 as requested.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. You have before you a document that was laying, which will be eight-E. It's not on your iPad. And it is an award of contract for solid waste agreement. Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir. Let me give you a little background. One, we just finalized this in the last few hours, so that's why it wasn't included in the board fact. We actually have a contract with the city of Martinsville to handle our solid waste disposal. City of Martinsville has a contract with First Piedmont to run the transfer station on Clearby Drive. This, we have had a couple of five-year contracts. This is another five-year contract. There's essentially nothing changed in this, except for one thing, which is really good. The price is going down for per-ton tipping fee. We pay now about $61 a ton. This is about $58 a ton. And one of the reasons it's gone down is that First Piedmont used to take our trash and Martinsville's trash to Roxboro, North Carolina. It now takes it through an agreement to Pennsylvania County, which has a relatively new and expanded landfill and is looking to take customers from the region. So First Piedmont's cost will be lower in the transfer of the trash, so that's why the overall tipping fee is low. And that's essentially the only, the only change that is in the contract other than the dates. And should you choose to approve, staff asks that you do so and also authorize me to sign the agreement and to execute it with the city of Martinsville.
Okay. In regard to the award of this contract, what is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the contract and authorize the county administrator to sign.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Nine, General Highway Matters. We have with us from B.DOT Rock House.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just have two items to provide you all with updates on today. One is, you know, we've had several heavy rain events, significant flooding since August, and we're continuing to work on repels on multiple locations. Two of those that will take fairly significant repels is Railroad Lane, which is a dead-end road, and also a very long pipe under the 58-220 bypass that, that comes out near the end of Doug Mountain Road. We're doing temporary repels, but both of those will take full replacements and we'll be working towards putting those plans into place. The other item I have is, is actually in Patrick County, and that's just an update on the Loveless Leap section. It's in Patrick County, but it's significant for Henry County, too. B.DOT and the contractor are working on updating the, updating the design and schedule and finalizing everything to hopefully, in the near future, start construction on widening that Loveless Leap section of 58. Don't have a definitive schedule yet because they're still working on updates, but they're working towards having that soon. And that's the only two items I have for you all today.
Anyone have any items?
Got a quick question. I was going to ask Lisa, but she's not here today. You know, the, I called her about Meeks Recycling Center, about them pulling the mud out in the road.
Okay.
And she was going to check on that and let me know, but I haven't heard back from her.
Okay.
You don't know anything, do you?
I don't know. I can find out and we will, one of us will get back to you.
Okay.
I would think, David, up on Sunset, the water coming off of the mountain was flooding all across the road and the railroad cafe and all that stuff in Bassett. And talking to Jeb, I think he was pretty impressed that Lisa come up and neck with him and, and all. Do you know what they're going to do up there or?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But I also checked with Lisa to see what, what she knows and what we have working forward and let you know.
All right. I thought he said something about they come in unstuck and pipes or something or some ditches, but I rode up there the other day and I couldn't see anything other than a cudzu. So I don't know if, if it was, you know, something they were going to do but, and hadn't done or what they, what they done.
I'll find out what the plan is.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else for David? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you all.
Agenda Item Number Ten, Informational Items. We will begin with taking comments from the board, beginning with Mr. Zare, if you have any.
Yes, sir. Dr. Moore.
Yes, sir. Last, at our last meeting, Mrs. Rose from my district came and talked to the board, later presented a petition of neighbors regarding the discharge of firearms in her next-door neighbor or in her neighborhood. And she asked if there was anything that we could do about that. Mr. Lyle provided a legal context to me that I shared with the board regarding the collection of data to look at how significant that issue was. And I guess before that even occurred, I was somewhat surprised that there was not an ordinance regarding the discharge of a firearm in a suburban residential neighborhood. There is not. So I bring this up now to find out if the board would like to do anything further with this. Also knowing that we've taken action as a sanctuary city hasn't really, in my view, nothing to do with that other than where you discharge these firearms. So I guess another piece for me is, do we look to the state and ask them for assistance? But George has said that there's really nothing in the state code regarding this.
Do you think we are supposed to regulate it under the conditions by OLC?
Correct. So I simply bring that up to see if there's any, the board, this board would like to do anything further. If not, then I will talk with Mrs. Rose and say there's nothing that we're going to do at this time.
I do understand from your correspondence that Sheriff Perry contacted Mrs. Rose as well.
Yes.
So we have taken some interest in this along with the fact that, you know, we're concerned for all citizens on all different matters, not just strictly firearms. I don't know yet what almost appears on paper to me seemed like dispute between neighbors. Even, albeit it could turn ugly. This board doesn't have a, have an authority to make people get along. They just, they choose to get along. And I don't know, is anyone else wrong for any other comment?
Sure, period. Can I ask you a question? You said you had an opportunity to talk to the lady about it. Is there anything in the area that would, would or could prohibit them from firing or discharging a weapon in that area?
Basically, as a general rule for Henry County, there are a couple sub-divisions that have it within their bylaws of people that live within that community that they choose that you can't discharge a weapon. Otherwise, the thing that we go out and check is that they have a safe backstop shooting in a safe manner, speaking with them, I mean, making sure someone's of the right mindset, just target practicing. You know, probably as everybody and as was alluded to in the beginning that the county voted to be a Second Amendment sanctuary, and I agree with that. You can't find a cookie cutter solution, and I can say representing the sheriff's office, that unfortunately, there are some people that decide at midnight and 1:00, they want to go out and, and as Chairman Adams spoke of, be it spiteful to upset a neighborhood with the sound of gunfire carries for some distance. On a rare occasion, you do have people that decide late at night, they want a target practice, and there's nothing that can be done about it. Fortunately, I wasn't to the point in distance of it that I could hear it inside the house, but went outside the house one morning and someone's wailing away with some type of weapon early at daylight one morning, you know? Can I see where it is a source of complaint? Yes, I can. But as a general rule right now, to try to answer your question, it's basically we check on the backstop, how they're shooting, and it, it is at least safe. And that's, that's about it.
But there's nothing to prevent, let's say, if Joe's next-door neighbor in Collinsville got an AK-47 for Christmas and Christmas morning gets out and starts shooting, there's nothing we can do about it.
If it isn't agreed upon in bylaws by a community, that is the only thing that I know has a foothold for a couple of the areas within our county.
And, you know, and honestly, I thought I would, what I information I gathered was what you just told me. Is I thought that, for instance, Farm and Dale has a, I think, ordinance there that you can't fire. There's, there's several other entities and candidates like that. You know, the Second Amendment gives everybody a right to own a weapon and to, to fire a weapon as long as it's nothing that prohibits them from doing it. And I, and I can't see anything in the guidelines of the county per se that would stop somebody from going out and shooting. And it may be that the neighbor beside them don't like it. You know, and that's becomes a problem with, with neighbors because you can't always choose your neighbor. You know? And it becomes a conflict sometime when you're dealing with neighbors that don't get along. And some neighbors may do it for spite, some may not, you know, but, you know.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion.
All right. And I'm sure the board, based upon some of the backgrounds you've given us, will be thinking about this as well. Mr. Brian, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan.
I do. And I, maybe I should have brought it up with Item C or Item, Item Seven or Eight-C with the SEDS. But, you know, with, with this COVID, we're, you know, our school system is having to try to educate our children virtually. And I'm getting calls, and of course, you know, the Horse Pasture District, we have a number of outlying areas that are underserved, no service at all, and I'm sure some of the other districts do, too. And our parents and families are having to go to other sites in order to gain internet access. It makes it difficult, particularly, I think, for families that have the parent works and having to try to arrange all of that, too. And I appreciate, you know, what, what the Harvest Foundation does with reaching out. Of course, you know, one of their goals is education and economic development and health. And all COVID falls within those guidelines. But if Henry County were to reach out to other localities to see what they're doing and how they are dealing with areas that are underserved by the internet, and of course, you know, we're looking for grants and I'm sure we're doing that routinely. But, you know, maybe that they're, maybe there's something out there that we are missing. I really don't know the answer other than, you know, when I see even, let's say, a bright child that is struggling, trying to learn virtually. You know, what about the child that's struggling and then has to deal with learning? It's very, it's very difficult, not only for the child but for the parent, too, to see. I've talked with a parent who, whose children, one of them last year was a very good student, an AB student. This year, virtually, he's failing. And he's just not able to grasp it virtually. Now, he has access to the internet via his, his parent taking him somewhere. So the more that we can do to try to, I think, help these children, and it might come too late. Maybe by the time that we figure it out, you know, COVID will be behind us. But I just would encourage the county to continue looking for grants, talking with other localities to see how they're addressing the needs of underserved areas.
And we do that. I mean, we're shaking the tree as hard as we can shake. Unfortunately, if you look at the state's map of how it measures coverage, it shows us at about a 95% coverage. When you look at Patrick County to our west, it shows them at virtually nothing. So whenever there's a divvying up of funds, it's going to go to the, to the localities that show a greater need. I think, and I think Dale would agree, we could argue that we don't have that kind of coverage as they indicate that we do, or at least suitable coverage. One of the problems is there was CARES Act money to help with this issue. But you had to have a project that was already well up and running, and you had to have the money spent by December 30th and the project finished. There's no way we could have complied with that timeframe. There is no simple answer, and I wish there were. But I think, as I've shared with you when we've talked about this, the easiest answer is to wear your mask, wash your hands, stay six feet away. That's simple. If we can do that and pull that off.
We can get back to school. We can get back to school.
The schools reopen, and we have to buy ourselves time to look at long range plans. But I certainly sympathize with folks who, who are in that situation. It's not easy, but the simplest, most approachable aspect of this, most immediately reachable defense is to wear your mask. Wash your hands and stay away from people. And we get kids back in school, and we educate them as they need to be educated. But we're going to work as hard as we can work on trying to get a long range solution. But, you know, it's a utility. It's just like a sewer line or a water line, and it's hard to run those everywhere to the reaches of the county where people want that service. We would love to do that, but it takes time and it takes money to get that utility to that doorstep. So really, it's simple, but it's not simple, I guess, because some people just refuse to do it. But follow the protocol, and that's going to help get kids back in school.
Right. Yeah, because they're not following those protocols, it's our children that are suffering by having to try to learn what they can virtually, but maybe for the future.
And it's not an ideal situation. And as one who has been married to a teacher for 31 years, it's not easy on the teachers either. They're working twice as hard and probably half as effectively as they used to. It's a horrible situation.
I'd like to echo what Deborah said, because I've had a number of calls. There's a section in my district in Axton where there are a group of teachers and students, and they have not had internet service, they have to go somewhere else, and it's harder for the teachers because they can't do what they need to do. I did encourage them to call Comcast, the individual that was here, just to see if there's anything that Comcast can do, because they would like Comcast to come down their road. I did explain how many houses had to be, but I said, you know, get on their radar and just see what they can do for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. Slough.
Yes, sir. If I saw in a paper where the city has authorized their police officers to shoot coyotes in the city, where do we fall, where do you fall, where does the sheriff's department fall in that, I mean, is?
Actually, I can't say that through our animal control division or anything else we've had any complaints. I do know kind of personally and through the office, there are a number of people that hunt coyotes, there's some groups that go out. Wasn't aware of the details that are going on inside the city. I think there probably are growing numbers, but of a problem per se, other than just potential concerns for pets and things like that, we haven't had something that has come up to the point we felt we needed to address it or discuss it with any office, but I think the hunting that goes on per se has some level of control.
I hope so. That's because I had a group come down last week, and they said they had been all over Patrick and Franken County, and they had never seen the, like, the coyotes that was on my farm. And that really bothered me when I thought about it, and like I say, I just read that in a paper about the, the city.
Like you, I live in the outskirts of the county. I think hearing and sometimes seeing, I think it's, it's evident there are more here, but you do take a risk somewhat to pets, to livestock when they're first born and things like that. But we haven't per se had complaints.
Can I interject, please? A lady lives up on Homestead, up near the area that Tim lives in, and she said that she can't put her animals out in the backyard because of the coyotes.
I've seen a half a dozen in my yard over the last month or so. Maybe the same one coming back six times, I don't know. They don't have numbers on them.
She said that one of her dogs was killed by one of the coyotes, and she has another dog, this small dog, and she's scared to put him out, and she's scared to let her grandkids go out and play in the backyard. So I called the Virginia State Game Control and had them to get in contact with her. I told her to call me back, let me know what they worked out, and I would check into it further, but she's not calling me back, so I don't know.
Would also add it in the population, I know a couple people that trap as well as we get into the colder time of the year, and they trap for the pelts. So that's something that also goes on in the county.
Thank you.
Okay. Could I add one comment to the original question back a minute ago? While that is a very deep topic and probably needed to be discussed on the issue of shooting, but I would also like that if the discussions are taking place, the other part that goes along with that is tannerite, because we get almost as many calls, and that seems to stir deeper. It's a binary agent that is, to shorten it down, it's a bomb in a bottle. I actually have had complaints of it being set off in Collinsville, and not only do you have the sound it makes, but you have the percussion that comes off of it. So I just wanted to add in fairness, but if there's any discussions that takes place and anything that is looked upon, please keep that in mind. I, anyway, thank you.
We have added that to our legislative agenda, to ask the General Assembly to, to look at that and take action against it, so that's on our lobbying list.
So are we having that problem in, in areas kind of such as?
We do. You have experimentation with it, you have partying with it, which to me is probably the most dangerous by far. There is no limit on poundage. If I have the amount of money and I want to pour out a mound the size of this podium, I can do it. And just to give you an idea, I watched a video, and I think it was 25 pounds underneath a truck framed vehicle, and it completely dismantled it and veed the frame. And then the other thing goes back, and that's a thing, spite. I do know of some situations that, yes, tannerite, it just literally shakes the whole neighborhood. Me personally, I don't see how it ever got started, but it did.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, they were setting it off on Barrows Mill Road, and it was shaking the windows in my house. And I, I had no idea what it was. I mean, I, I slept under a 105 and a 155 in Vietnam and a 10, and this, for being that far away, I couldn't believe it when I found out, you know, where they were putting it off at and what it was doing at my house.
Thank you for today.
Do you have anything else?
No.
The only thing I have is, as was communicated to the board, and we need to make sure that the media is aware, it's probably on Mr. Hall's list, our December meeting date will be December 15th. On the original calendar, it was actually listed as December 22nd, and in review of that, along with what COVID has caused as far as employee time, trying to get all the vacation time in toward the end of the month, the 15th seems to be more suitable than the 22nd. And again, just want to make mention of that so that all of us are aware.
We probably need a motion to make that change since you approved the original meeting date.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0. That's all I have. Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir. I've got a couple things for you. First of all, our holiday schedule, just to remind you, we follow the state schedule, which means we'll be closed at noon tomorrow and have Thursday and Friday off. Number two, Mark cannot be with us today, but I placed in front of you the unemployment reports of the month. We are continuing our trickle down in our rate, so I wanted you to have that information. As you know, the governor about 10 days ago proclaimed that we would be part of lowering of gatherings, 25 or fewer in a public or private gathering. We are going to follow that, so starting today, we will have 25 or fewer in every meeting that we're in. Clearly, it's not a real issue today, but tonight with some rezonings and with the veterans' awards, it could be an issue, and the sheriff has agreed to have his folks kind of monitor that for us in the hallway and bring folks in or allow folks to come in if we get over 25 and want to come in. Allow them to come in based on their specific agenda item, so we're going to kind of manage that as best we can at their, at their rear door. And finally, way back when, when we did the second budget for this fiscal year, we told you that we wanted to wait six months to see where we were before kind of crawling out of the bunker and making any adjustments. We're close to that six month point, so I want to kind of give you an update. We had budgeted roughly a 10% to 15% reduction in revenue streams. We are, we're seeing that, maybe on the lower end, closer to 10, but some of that is, is kind of interesting to me. I don't know whether you'll find it interesting, but our sales tax numbers are actually up almost 7% year to date, completely unaffected by not walking into brick and mortar stores. Folks are just buying stuff online, and the saving grace is that the General Assembly a couple years ago enacted what was called the Wayfair Act, where they actually put sales tax on online sales. If we did not have that act in front of us, we would be in serious trouble. But year to date, our sales tax is up actually over 6%. Some others are, they vacillate, and as you can imagine, our transient occupancy tax, our hotel tax is down about 30% because people aren't traveling and staying in hotels, so that's, that's not a huge surprise for us. Meals tax is down about 4.4%, but it has trended upward over the last two or three months, so hopefully that'll be a positive trend that continues. We have a series of smaller amounts or smaller pockets that are kind of inconsequential to the overall scheme of things, but our courthouse fees and our security fees, there are no trials, there's no access to real courthouse activity, so each of those is down roughly 40%, so we're trying to mitigate that. Jail costs, jail fees are down because there are fewer inmates because of the COVID reaction and putting more people on monitors and finding other avenues to have them. Our recreation fees are bottomed out, we're about 85% off of our recreation fees, and to tell you the truth, I don't know when we will be able to reinstitute a full-blown, robust recreation program. Clearly, being inside in the winter is not anticipated to be a positive thing, so I do not know when we will get back to that. If I had to guess, it'll probably be after the vaccine is readily available and we can take our masks off. But we're monitoring that, and we'll follow basically what the school system does. If they seem to think it's wise to have folks in gyms playing each other, we may reevaluate that, but right now, I don't know when that may happen. Our EMS fees for service are down about 25%. I think part of the rationale there may be that people weren't, didn't want to go to the hospital, didn't want to see a healthcare issue come up because they're scared of what they may see when they get there. However, in the last month, that negative trend has reversed, and for the month of October, reportable in October, the number was up about 6%, so I think that indicates perhaps that things are kind of getting back to where they would normally call for EMS service. So I think we're at a point where we can kind of crawl out a little bit, and with your okay, we have had a hiring freeze on for about seven months. I would like to pull back on that just a little bit. We have several positions that have gone unfilled, and they are the most important ones of those, we will instruct staff to kind of tiptoe out and see if we can fill those. There'll be no new positions, but these are replacement hirings for folks who haven't left, so we're going to kind of tiptoe back into that. After the end of December, staff will kind of gather and see if there are capital items that we feel like we can start to readdress, but we don't have any concept of that right now, so we'll bring that to you at a later point. So I say I'll have to say this, and, and also with the Commonwealth of Virginia, I've been on numerous calls with their financial people and their analysts, and they, the damage they thought would be done to the state budget, about half of that has been done. In other words, it's about half as bad as they thought it was going to be. So I think there'll be some, some things at the state level that will begin to change as well, and all this is dependent on when we can get back to whatever normal is going to be. So I think going forward, I think we're right where we thought we would be, that's a long way of saying that, and we're going to look at some of the more prominent and important positions that have gone unfilled and try to tiptoe back into filling those as, as, as we see fit. I wish I had a magic wand and I could tell you when this was going to end. No clue. I was the guy who said it might last six months, so how smart am I? But I want to praise our staff for everything it has done to maneuver this ship. We meet, we have a lot of hallway meetings about numbers, where they are, where they're going, tests and positive tests and negative tests and, and social distancing within the building. Very proud of what our folks have done, but fatigue is setting in, it's setting in with our EMS staff, it's setting in with law enforcement, I know, it's setting in with our dispatchers who are swamped. We just have to re-energize and make sure that we don't let that fatigue take us where we don't want to go, and we will constantly be vigilant on that. But I'm proud of what our guys and ladies have done, we'll continue to do it. Hopefully, revenue, particularly the sales tax, begins to still show an increase, and we'll see what's in front of us. But that's where we are at basically the six month point, and we're hopeful that the next six months will be better than the past six months, but that's yet to be seen. Any questions from the board on, on any of that? All right, I think that's all I have, sir.
Okay, that takes us to agenda item number 11. If someone will cite the items that will allow us to go into closed meeting.
This is Chairman. I move the board convening closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Public Service Authority Anchor Commission, Ninth District Development Financing Incorporated, and West Piedmont Planning District Commission. 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.23711A3 for discussion acquisition disposal of real estate. And 2.23711A5 for discussion of as yet unannounced industries.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is 6-0. Jennifer, see you all upstairs at 5:00. Closed meeting on a motion by Mr. Zarek, second by Mr. Bryant. Mr. Wang, will you hold the board?
These certified closed sessions, this is a public business matter, often impacted and identified as a motion of building, but it's his name.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slough.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have an appointment with the Public Service Authority for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board reappoint Marcus Stone to the Public Service Authority for a term that expires January 5th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0. Jennifer, Mr. Bryant, I believe for the anchor commission, likewise, you have an appointment for the board's consideration of several names.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we reappoint Jeanette Hurd, Pamela Randall, Bonnie Pfefferel to the anchor commission for the term of four years, expiration dates December 31st, 2024.
Second.
A motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0. Jennifer, Dr. Morton, for the Ninth District Development Financing Incorporated, appointment for consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I made that we reappoint Barry Jarrett to the Ninth District Development Financing Incorporated for a term ending December 31st, 2022.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0. Jennifer, and Mr. Slough for the West Piedmont Planning District Commission, Technical Advisory Committee and Alternates, two appointments.
Okay. Lee, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Lee Clark to be the Technical Advisory Committee, chairperson and then alternate to be Brian McAlexander for a term of three years to expire December 31st, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0. Jennifer, board members, do you have any other items of consideration before we stand in adjournment prior to our 6 p.m. meeting? Seeing that, Mr. Hall, do you have it? Seeing that, Mr. Hall, do you have it?
We will declare us in recess until our 6:00 p.m. meeting. Recession of the afternoon session of the November 24th, 2020 meeting. Like to welcome all of our guests here tonight. I'll remind you, if you want to be placed specifically on the agenda to address the board, you'll need to contact the county administrator's office at least seven days in advance of any meeting to be placed specifically on the agenda. However, we do allow members of the public to address the board on the matters presented by the public that will come up later in this meeting tonight. Business at hand first and foremost, and we do apologize that we're under the restrictions as mandated down by the governor. I know that there are those that are outside that possibly would wish to be in, but we will move along with this portion of the meeting and then if you will respectfully let others come in that we did have some public hearings tonight on rezoning and, and ordinance, proposed ordinance that we need to discuss tonight. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out. Our first item tonight is agenda item 12, a presentation of the 2020 Veterans Award. Each year, a local veteran is recognized for the service to our country and our community with the Martinsville Henry County Outstanding Military Veteran Award. This is typically presented as part of the community's Veterans Day ceremony, but due to COVID restrictions this year, the ceremony was not held. The Board of Supervisors is happy to present this at tonight's meeting. In addition, following our presentation, David Kipfinger and S.T. Foltzer representing the Martinsville Henry County Veterans Service Organization, or VSO, will be here to present some veterans' awards on behalf of their group. With that, this was created as an idea for something that we could do for our veterans and suggested by Supervisor Deborah Buchanan a number of years ago. I'm going to ask Deborah if she would give us a little bit of background tonight, and then Supervisor Slaughter is going to read some background on our recipient.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This 2020 Outstanding Military Veteran Award is being presented by the Henry County Board of Supervisors in conjunction with the City of Martinsville. We'd like to express our sincere appreciation to all veterans and veteran service organizations. The award will go to the nominee judged by the selection committee that is comprised of a representative from Henry County and the City of Martinsville, as well as a VSO representative. This selection represents the best of what service to our country and to the community means. The award was created in 2009 by the Board of Supervisors. With the support of the Martinsville City Council, the award was expanded in 2013 to include nominations of both Martinsville and Henry County veterans.
The 2020 recipient began his military training at a Virginia Military Institute and later joined the United States Army. He has since been instrumental in leading JROTC programs at Basset, Patrick County, and Tunstall High Schools. His unwavering love for other veterans complements his devotion to his country and community. He often goes out of his way to help them. For many years, the recipient would drive other veterans to the D-Day Memorial in Bedford. He has made many tribute shadow boxes to honor other veterans or their survivors. He continues to help his fellow veterans at every opportunity. He loves to share his love of history and our country with others. One such event was his presentation of the history of the American flag at the Martinsville Henry County Historical Center. He leads the JRC, JROTC programs with integrity and commitment. He goes above and beyond to teach the values of citizenship, service to the United States, personal responsibility, and team building. This individual has given himself for the betterment of the people of our community in his service and leadership to other veterans and the children of our community. This year's recipient lives on Plantation Drive in Collinsville with his wife Donna. We are proud to present the 2020 Outstanding Veteran Award to Lieutenant Colonel David King.
I'm going to ask Vice Chairman Buchanan and Supervisor Slaughter if on behalf of the board, if they will present these items to the recipient.
Senator King, on behalf of the Henry County Board of Supervisors, we want to thank you for your service to our community and to our country. Normally, we would put this around your neck, but I won't do that this time because of the restrictions, but I'd like to give this to you.
Thank you so much. It's been a privilege to serve.
The 2020 Outstanding Military Veterans Award is proudly presented to David King in recognition of your distinguished military and community service, November 24th, 2020.
Would you like to come?
I always get advice to be brief, so I will. I'm my wife over here. But my platoons are most what I learned as a lieutenant. I learned from soldiers and particularly the non-commissioned officers. Remember, my platoon sergeant told me nobody earns an award or promotion on his own, and that's certainly true. So I thank you all. The other thing he told me is, Lieutenant, you got to live up to your promotions, your awards, anything like that, every day. And I will do my best to do that. So thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, David Kipfinger and S.T. Foltzer, you have some presentations.
Thank you all for coming this evening. We have several awards we want to give out. The first one will be S.T. Foltzer presenting an award to a very distinguished member of our community. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for allowing this to happen tonight. I would like to ask Sharon Mills, if she would, to come forward. What Sharon does for the VSO is she has made it possible for us to use the historic John D. Basset Center for our Veterans Day's activities for the last several years, no cost to us. She has allowed us to do that and coordinated with David and others to make everything run smooth. Sharon, this certificate of excellence is presented to you for outstanding performance in support of veteran service organization given at the historic John D. Basset Event Center. We said, we were going to give this to you on Veterans Day, but that didn't work out. It's signed by David and myself. And this is the award, and this is an engraved pen and pencil set to you. And thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you so much for this. What I do is so insignificant to what each of you have done as a veteran, both ladies and gentlemen, to serve this country. And it's a very, I'm humbled. Thank you very, very much for everything that you've done for this country. We appreciate it.
The next will be two presentations that we normally do on Memorial Day, but of course Memorial Day had to be canceled, we thought we'd do it on Veterans Day. But lo and behold, COVID decided he gonna not let us do it. So we're doing it this evening for, in remembrance of the Memorial Day service. So if Thomas Spencer and David Gillaram will come forward and they can do their presentations.
I want to call Desmond Ford. On behalf of your grandfather, Daniel Spencer, I want to present this plaque to you for his outstanding service for the VSO. He was in numerous organizations. He was a vice commander of post 78. He was in the Martinsville City Henry County Veterans Honor Guard, and he was also in post 4637, VFW of the Foreign Wars. But I want to present you this plaque for the veteran's service of Martinsville Henry County dedication on this day, 24th of November, 2020. Daniel Spencer.
On behalf of Darrell Pay's family and the Martinsville Henry County Veteran Service Organizations, I accept this on behalf of the family and the VSO. Darrell was a member of the American Legion, AMVETS, DAV, and the Veterans of Foreign War. He served honorably in Vietnam. He was Veteran of the Year in 2008. And so this will remain with us for a while and hopefully we'll be able to get it to their family. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, each year since 1992, the Veteran Service Organization was organized, Veterans of the Year has been selected. Each year, the separate service organizations will select from their post a veteran and submit his or her name to the select committee for consideration for the Veteran of the Year Award. We've had many to pass on since 1992, and here are the names that have chosen, that have been chosen as a Veteran of the Year since 1992. James Hayes, Lee Smith, George Cox, James Barrow, Robert E. Wells, James W. Rogers, Charles Washburn, John Redd, Carlton E. Severance, Hartley Alackey, Paul C. Shively, Gordon P. Young Jr., Melvin L. Vernon, Charles E. Canode, Kenneth W. Peel, Warren A. Richardson, Darrell A. Pay, Curtis Milner, Joey Ellison, Robert Hazlitt, David Kipfinger, I think he's here, Mark Thomas, Billy Barber, Thomas Spencer, Malin Shelton, William Jerry Perdue, S.T. Foltzer, and last year's recipient was Leonard Boyce. This year's Veteran of the Year was born July 22nd, 1950, in Martinsville, Virginia. He graduated from Martinsville High School in 1968. He joined the U.S. Army in March of 1970, and after finishing his schooling, was assigned to the Republic of Vietnam, being assigned to USOPAC as a 36th Charlie, which is a lineman, in the Signal Company. Upon his separation from the military, he returned to the Martinsville Henry County area and has served the community with honor and distinction. He is a member of many organizations in the area where he serves and many leadership positions. He is committed to donating time and resources to meeting the needs of veterans and fellow citizens in the Martinsville Henry County area. His objective is to challenge himself to be the best he can be with the talents and abilities that God has given to him so that he can advance successfully in the field he has chosen to work in. His experience shows that he is well-qualified in the different fields that he has worked in front. Sergeant, United States Army with combat experience, a cross-country semi-driver, experience in the gemstone industry, owner and operator of a successful auction company, past commander of the Horse Pasture Ruin Club, the board member of the Horse Pasture Volunteer Fire Department. His military awards include the National Defense Service Medal, the Army Accommodation Medal, the Vietnam Service Medal, and the Vietnam Campaign Medal with the 60 Device. He is a member of the Hillcrest Baptist Church, where he serves as an usher and is on the social committee. He's a member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, American Legion Post 42, the Horse Pasture Ruin Club, and board member of the Horse Pasture Volunteer Fire Department and a national member of Auctioneers of America. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you this year's Veteran of the Year, Mr. Charles E. Williams, Jr. Please come forward.
As a veteran of the VSO, it's an honor of this outstanding service to our community and country. Presented by the Veteran Service Organization of Martinsville Henry County, November 2020. God bless. Step up.
You can do it, Charlie. You can do it.
I'm going to take you a second, all folks. This is quite an honor for me because there's people out here that deserve us a lot more than I do. Coming from the veterans, I really do appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you. It's quite an honor.
Thank you all for coming this evening. That concludes the service. We would ask the people that are in here now to please leave so the next group can come in.
David is a tiny person in this space. That is, sometimes it's ridiculous. I mean, that's what it doesn't, that is, think of the hell in the world.
Is that, that might be Bill Ward?
It is.
Okay, we'll take up agenda item number 13 at this time, a public hearing on consideration of a proposed ordinance regarding school construction, sales, and use tax. Mr. Hall.
Give me just a second to log back in here.
I don't know who you are.
I don't know who you are either.
I have nothing to hide from quite somehow.
And a voice from above, say it.
During the recent election, Henry County voters approved a ballot referendum to raise local sales tax by 1% with the proceeds going towards school construction and capital projects. The next step in the process requires the board to update the county ordinance to reflect the increase in collection of the tax. This measure requires a public hearing, and it has been properly advertised for the meeting. In your working papers, you have a memo from Mr. Lyle to propose changes to the ordinance and the public hearing.
Okay, we will open the public hearing to take input at 6:00.
Okay, we will open the public hearing to take input at six-twenty. Is there anyone wishing to address the board during this public hearing on the consideration of the proposed ordinance? Anyone wishing to address the board on the public hearing on consideration of the proposed ordinance regarding school construction, sales, and use tax? Seeing no hands in this meeting, I will close the public hearing at six-twenty. What's the pleasure of the board in regard to this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the amendment to change the Henry County Code of Ordinance to levy a one percent sales and use tax to fund school construction and renovation for a period of time commencing on April one, two thousand twenty-one and ending on July twenty-eighth, twenty forty.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a six-zero, Jennifer. Mr. Hall, would you like any further comment as far as the actual referendum on this?
As you probably know, past fifty-five, forty-five. I think the voters took it seriously and understood that there are needs in our school system that need to be addressed and with a specific funding stream for those. I think it helps all of us as we move forward and try to do what we need to do. I was pleased to see the action and I'm pleased to see that we can implement it.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item fourteen, I'll call for any participants that wishes to participate in a public hearing on a rezoning application, R dash twenty dash oh eight. Bobby J. Nicholson. We have with us our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark. Mr. Clark.
Good evening. This property is located eleven-sixty Fisher Farm Road in the Ridgeway District. Tax numbers fifty-two seven, twenty-one, fifty-three through fifty-six. The applicant is requesting the rezoning of seven tenths of an acre from suburban residential to mixed residential. The applicant has removed the existing site-built house and intends to replace it with a double-wide manufactured home and filing a public hearing, both planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input at six-twenty-two P.M. Anyone wishing to address the board under public hearing for a rezoning application, R dash twenty dash oh eight, Bobby J. Nicholson. Please let it be known. Seeing and hearing no one, I will close the public hearing at six-twenty-two. Mr. Zaire, I believe this is in your district.
Yes, sir. I move the board to approve the rezoning request.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda item fifteen, public hearing. And I'll call for anyone wishing to participate for the rezoning application, R dash twenty dash oh nine, Adam Lee Foley. Again, with the background material, we have Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark. Mr. Clark.
Mr. Chairman, there are several digits on this public hearing. Do you want to get them through?
Yes, that's, that's fine. It's not required that you sign in for this. If you will, file in, please, and that way, and please space out. Thank you very much. Please, please come on in. Okay, Mr. Clark, if you will give us some background on this prior to me opening the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so R twenty, R twenty oh nine for Adam Lee Foley. This property is located on the northwest side of Smith Rucker Roads, approximately four hundred feet north of Virginia Avenue in the Collinsville District. Tax number is forty-one one twenty, section F, lots A and B. The applicant here has requested the rezoning of approximately one point two acres from suburban residential district to commercial district B one. The applicant intends to develop commercial self-storage units on the property. There were several residents that spoke at the planning commission. I see some of those same folks here this evening. The commission had quite an in-depth discussion about it. And generally speaking, the concerns that were expressed, both by the residents and the commission, is that this is the first lot in the residential part of the subdivision. Does not front on U.S. two-twenty business. It does actually front on Smith Rucker Road. There was concern expressed about changing that first lot in the residential subdivision to commercial and thereby could affect changing the character of the existing community there. And there was also concern expressed about additional traffic. And there already are some traffic concerns in the neighborhood and they were concerned that it might, could get worse if you allow for more commercial development up into the subdivision. Filing a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff both recommended this rezoning request be denied.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark, for the background. The board has also in its working papers, letters of opposition and petition to such. I want to open the public hearing on this at six-twenty-seven to take input on this rezoning application. Prior to taking input, since we do have folks here with interest in it, I'd like to read a brief statement that is part of board policy. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, the district in which you live, and by coming to the podium, you've agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board and its members. And we ask you to please try to keep your presentation to three minutes or less. I'm gonna do it a little bit different tonight, which is within the purview of the way that we've conducted meetings in the past specifically with the planning and zoning areas, both the zoning appeals and planning commission. Rather than calling for a group or a show of hands, is there anyone wishing to speak for this application first? Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this application? I see one hand. Sir, I'm gonna ask you to come first and then I will call for anyone else that wishes to support it and then I will call for any one wishing to speak in opposition. So please come to the podium and identify yourself, please. Thank you.
Start off, my name is Adam Foley. I'm the hopeful developer of that lot of land here on Smith Rucker. I listened intently during the concerns of the community regarding the rezoning of that land. All the issues I heard were specific to the convenience store and issues that have been with the convenience store for apparently quite some time regarding shootings, trash, and of that nature. This is a completely separate business, completely separate use of land as to a convenience store. I've been talking to Mr. Lee Clark about ways to improve the appearance of that land to maintain the residential quality of the land behind it with a bunch of barrier trees, a bunch of shrubbery planted. It is gonna be a well-lit area. I don't riffraff that has been complained of in that area. It's not typically happened under a well-lighted area. There's no soliciting signs that would be posted on the building stating that it is rezoned. I plan on having that enforced. Fencing, coating around the building to keep that stuff out only a key to the people that own the unit in that area. All the issues stated, again, that involve the store. I don't want my business either. I don't plan on allowing that to happen in my business. I will not allow that stuff to happen in a place in my business. That's all I really got for the issues. Everything, like I said, everything I heard wasn't specific to the, to the proposed use of that land anyway. But I understand the concerns of the community with that land being changed to a commercial zoning. Appreciate y'all for your stuff.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in support of this application? Okay, at this time, I will call for, is there anyone wishing to speak against? Please identify yourself by raising your hand. Yes, sir. Please come to the podium, state your name.
Yes, sir. My name is Garrett Brown. I'm in the Collinsville District and I live in one forty-one Hillendale Road. Been there approximately forty-three years. And I am in opposition of this for several reasons, okay? Number one, it's right there where you start into our subdivision. What's it going to do? It's probably gonna create more traffic. If he's got sixty units or however many units that he's, that he's got, then you've got people coming in and out of that road. Okay, as they come in and out of that road, what do they do? Say, well, you know, I'm just gonna ride around the block. I'm gonna see what's up here. You don't know what those peoples, what the people's up to. You don't know what they're looking for if they come there. You don't know how honest that they are. Yes, just like Mr. Foley said, the convenience mart or the service station down there has created problems for our, for our neighborhood. Lot of traffic comes from, from up there. They come, they put out trash. They come, he was talking about being well-lit. Well, in front of our house, Mr. Bradshaw, which is a neighbor of mine, has, has actually paid to put lights up across there and it is well-lit, just like a football field tonight. But does that stop people from coming over there and parking and all? No, it doesn't. We still get it. I mean, I'm, I'm up several hours throughout the night, a lot of times throughout the week, going down there, running people off at twelve, one, two o'clock in the morning. So, you know, my concern is, is it's gonna create more traffic. And people that takes the rental part there, are they renting it for a good reason, just to store things? Or are they storing things illegal? You know, if it's illegal, what are they gonna do without, within our neighborhood? I guess we got, you know, we've got an older community. Our community, most people's old. We know about everybody that rides up, up in that neighborhood. And now we look at it as adding traffic. You know, we've got several people that's passed away and people bought homes and are trying to sell them. And they're one right adjacent to this property. And, you know, I talked to the guy that's rebuilding it now and, you know, you know, he don't want to look out the door when he comes out on the carport and see these, these buildings. And I guess, well, my time's about to expire, but I'm leaving you with one question. And it's just a yes or no answer. If you lived in my neighborhood, would you want that there? Or would you want it going into your neighborhood? Just, just some food for thought. Thank y'all.
Are there others that wish? I see one hand back there, yes.
My name is Randy Powell. I just recently bought a house on twenty-four Hillendale Road. I can look right across the street and see the property where they want to put the storage units. I've been a realtor for eighteen years and I know that this is gonna affect the values of this neighborhood. It's gonna decrease the values over a period of time. And I didn't invest in that neighborhood because of only the value. I invested in it because the people that live there have a well-established neighborhood. They've been there for years. It's a nice neighborhood. Everybody takes care of their property. That's the reason I'm there. This is gonna create traffic. It's gonna devalue it. And if you do one commercial building, what's to stop you from somebody else coming along and saying, we want to change one of the houses and have a business in the house? Once you open the door, there's not many ways to close it. So I'm opposed to it and I think the rest of the neighborhood is opposed to it. Thank you.
Think I saw a hand over here. Yes, sir.
My name is Kelvin Bradshaw. I live also in the neighborhood close to the brown, the first gentleman that was up here. And we're very concerned about the neighborhood. We do keep a, a nice neighborhood. I've been there for, I think, forty-four years now. I raised my children there and raising part of my grandchildren. It's a very nice neighborhood, but if, if, you know, you gotta work at your neighborhood to keep it safe. I purchased a piece of property some years ago, straight across the street from me. And I had to put lights there. I had to put conveyor cameras there and all to keep people out, to keep the wrong people from coming in, in there, parking. And that's been, that's been a problem. It's really been a problem. It's been a sore thumb. And, and they, when they came with the, with the Marathon Station there, it's been a problem. It's nothing to people contragating down there. I don't know what they're doing. Drugs, I don't know what they're doing. Police there, police sirens all night. You hear them running people off. People getting shot, getting killed down there. And so we, we don't need that to come to the neighborhood. We have enough problem. We have enough problem in the neighborhood already with what's already there, with the business place that's already on two-twenty. We have enough problem there. You put another commercial place there for people to contragate at night, you know, to park and do whatever they gonna do, you know, and you gonna add to the problem that's already existing as it is. I, I have two pages of people in the neighborhood that's against it. We are the citizens against the rezoning of the community. I have signed, two pages signed by members of the neighborhood that are against this. They don't want to see it in the neighborhood. And like, and like Garrett said, what you wanted in your, your neighborhood? Would you want to live like that? You, you gotta work to keep your neighborhood up, you know? And, and the other generals say, you know, people are coming into our neighborhoods now. They're starting to invest in buying houses and fixing, fixing them up. I looked at the house that I think it's him that's fixed up the house and it's really looking good. The house ain't looked that good in, I don't know how long. He's invested a lot of time and money fixing that house up. And there's several more houses in the neighborhood that are for sale and people that come in. And people want a decent place to live. I, I, I don't want trash in, in my neighborhood. I want a decent place to live. And here I am, I'm seventy years old. I, I can't, I can't fight nobody there at seventy years old. I might could afford somebody forty years, forty years old or whatever, but I'm seventy years old. I ain't, I ain't got no strength to fight nobody that comes in there, you know? And, and, you know, so we don't need this in our neighborhood. I hope y'all really think about it and, and realize that the majority of people in the neighborhood does not want it. You know, they just want to live and be comfortable. So thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Caleb Bradshaw. I live at one thirty Smith Rucker Road, right adjacent to the area in question. I respect Mr. Foley wanting to build the storage unit and I understand him saying that he was gonna put lighting. By living in that area, me and my husband, we did put, we have lighting and that gas station does have lighting. Lighting don't stop crimes or people's thoughts. So adding more lighting is not gonna stop what people want. So adding more lighting is not going to stop what people want to do. The lighting is not the issue. The storage area will cause people to be drawn there, drawn to drive around to see what's in the neighborhood because I'm from Massachusetts. The main reason I come down here is for my husband, one, two, in that neighborhood. It's nice, it's quiet, it's calm, but at two or three o'clock in the morning, yes, half of the issues are the gas, well, all the issues are the gas station. And that storage unit being added, no, you know, not him that he's going to add the problem is that storage unit that's going to add people to be curious. We want to keep honest people honest, don't add the storage area there. It won't have people to have curious thoughts, you know? You won't find bodies back there, you don't find drugs back there. People walk their dog two, three o'clock in the morning. That's normal where we live at, but they stopped doing that because you get those cars cut through in speed and people say, I can't go for a nice walk in the summer, in the summer evening because people are speeding and cut through to go to Old English to get back on two twenty to, so they won't be caught by whatever going down at the gas station. So now if you put the storage unit, they could just cut through the storage unit or hide behind the storage unit. And we have a double, um, driveway. So people sit in our driveway with the lights on and our lights doing whatever they do. We have to run them off. So adding a storage unit and not a house is going to cause confusion and add to our property taxes. So please consider not adding that storage unit. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
I need to fill a part. I live on English Road and I've been there now about twenty-eight years. I agree with everything that has been said tonight. Uh, and I just needed to let you know that there are several of us that live alone up there. Uh, we don't need this extra, uh, problems that we may have. Uh, and also I'm concerned about if this should be changed to commercial and years later, what's going to happen if they decide to sell the property to somebody else who's going to stop at another business of some sort? So I agree with everyone here in our community. We do not need and do not want the storage buildings. And that would be, um, I think that would be something that, uh, would devalue our properties and we don't need that either. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else before I close the public hearing? Seeing no hands, I will close this public hearing at six forty-three. Uh, the board has had sufficient background material supplied to it prior to this meeting, uh, along with the, uh, summation by, uh, Mr. Clark. Uh, a number of you have probably either received phone calls and/or emails in regard to this. Mr. Bryant, uh, this is in your district. Uh, I will let you comment as to, ask you to comment, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, I also have talked to several people, uh, on Rucker Road, English Road. It lives in that area, that suburb area. And I've heard your concerns about it and, you know, I have concerns myself. Number one is that you're changing a residential area into a commercial area. Uh, part of zoning is to separate residential areas versus, uh, commercial areas. Once you open up a residential area to a commercial area, then you're putting yourself in a situation where other places, like for instance, the second gentleman spoke, may sell a home and somebody with a commercial thought may come in and take that and open it up into a commercial house. And next thing you know, you have several places on that road that's gone to commercial. That's one thing that we don't want to have, uh, happen into a, uh, in a residential area. That entrance to that, uh, and I'm quite familiar with it, would be a, be an eyesore to me, just, just to be coming in with a group of, of storage buildings. And also, not only that, is that, you know, there, there's, there's people that rent these storage buildings that's going to be from out of town also. You want to just rent them to people that's in town. You would rent them to anybody that had the money per se that would want a space into that storage building. So you could have somebody from North Carolina, somebody from South Carolina, somebody from anywhere that would want to come to rent those buildings. It is a quick loop through there to get around the red light to go back down to two twenty and you would have people, it wouldn't take long for them to figure out that quick turnaround and then you would have traffic flowing. Also, you say you're going to put up lights there. Well, people honestly don't listen up, don't adhere to lights anymore like they used to. Uh, so you, you're going to not have a curfew there. People's going to be coming in at all hours at night, in and out. And the next thing you're going to know, you're going to have people all the way up and down to that neighborhood. Uh, that's, uh, that's going to be detrimental to the, the security and, and the quietness of the area. So myself, uh, not speaking for the other board members, myself personally, I would suggest that we deny this request, uh, for the zoning on Smith Rucker Road.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at this time? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny this rezoning, raise your right hand. It is six zero, gentlemen. Again, thank, thank you folks for coming out tonight. We're going to, uh, move on to agenda item sixteen, matters presented by the public. Uh, Mr. Steve Edwards and Mr. Edwards, I see you in the back if you want to come to the podium.
We're not doing Bobby Nickelston's. We're not doing Bobby Nickelston's.
Good evening, Chairman Adams, Vice Chairman, Chairperson Buchanan and fellow members of the Henry County Board of Supervisors. My name is Stephen Edwards, a native of Henry County and a trustee named in the life estate of Steve and Nancy Edwards, who are both present here tonight. My parents reside at fifty Alcott Drive in Bassett, which is located in the Reed Creek District. They established occupancy of this residence in July nineteen sixty and have lived here continuously since, enjoying the peace and tranquility afforded to all citizens of Henry County. Also in nineteen sixty, the property owner, the property owned across the street established a brick residence as well, securing Health Department approval for well and conventional sewage system. In nineteen eighty-three, new owners purchased the property from the original nineteen sixty owners and in nineteen eighty-nine, they established a single wide trailer onto this one point seven-five acres of land without subdividing the property. A subsequent Health Department application was made for the trailer to have its own conventional sewage system. The Health Department granted this request and approved joint usage of the existing well to serve both the brick residence and the newly established single wide trailer. Residential electric service for this trailer through the local utility provider occurred during this time in conjunction with water and sewage being established. With these standard construction events now complete, a typical occupancy of the trailer commenced. Fast forward to the present, the original owners of the property and the trailer have now passed. Ownership of the trailer was transferred to another individual not affiliated with the property owner's heirs. Nefarious activities have commenced at this trailer, occurring during all times of the day. Vehicular traffic on Alcott Drive has increased and now foot traffic by individuals unknown to the neighborhood is happening. Safety and well-being is now a major concern of my parents and the surrounding neighbors, especially those with small children. Several arrests of individuals by the Henry County Sheriff's Office has occurred and we thank them immensely for stepping up the patrol of the neighborhood. Ultimately, the residential service, electric service to this trailer was disconnected, presumably due to non-payment of the electric bill. The current occupants or squatters established a workaround for electric service by acquiring a generator to provide the needed electricity. However, this generator was not tapped for emergency electrical power purpose but continuous uninterrupted power circumventing the local utility provider. The generator only stops emitting noise when it runs out of fuel. This does provide a brief period of peace and quiet but quickly disappears when the occupants refuel and restart the generator. The noise from this generator can be heard from all parts of my parents' house, day and night during its operation. Even neighbors further away are impacted by the constant noise emitted from this generator. Henry County Ordinance, section thirteen dash two hundred, is titled, "Excessive and Disturbing Sounds", and it states the following under section A, and I quote, "It shall be unlawful to operate, install, have, maintain, or permit on or about any residence, store, shop, business establishment, warehouse, or other commercial building in the county, any loud, loudspeaker, or other sound-producing or reproducing device capable of emitting music, comma, noise, sounds, tones, or the human voice such that music, noise, sounds, tones, or human voices can be heard on any public sidewalk or public street, except for outside intercoms, paging speakers, bells or buzzers, signaling the ringing of a telephone, fire, smoke, burglar alarm, or whistle bell or buzzer, signaling the time to begin or stop work of school, which are only used intermittently for the transmission of the human voice for announcing, summoning, or paging an individual person, or for the signaling of the ringing of a telephone, the danger of a fire or burglary, or the beginning or stopping of work or school." Under section B, it states, "To emit from any loudspeaker or sound amplification equipment located in or in, on any vehicle, trailer, airplane, or balloon, or from any residence, any music, speech, or noise which can be heard outside of such vehicle, trailer, airplane, balloon, or residence in the unaided human ear." I visited the Office of Planning and Zoning and provided the above details to the staff members present. They listened to my situation description and provided a response of multiple known situations occurring across the county with generators running continuously. They also conveyed to me that the noise ordinance is open to individual interpretation and the possibility of amending if needed. The Henry County Sheriff's Office was recently called regarding loud music emanating from this trailer. A deputy arrived shortly at the trailer and requested they turn their music down. The occupants or squatters complied and the deputy left the trailer. As the deputy left in their vehicle, a request to stop and communicate with me regarding the noise occurred. I inquired about this noise being emitted from the generator and the deputy believed the ordinance did not cover this. The deputy did follow up with the supervisor on duty for another interpretation regarding this question. The supervisor, in their opinion, conveyed to the deputy that the ordinance covered loud music but did not cover noise being emitted from the generator as being a violation. I thanked the deputy for coming by for the loud music and then stopped, and then for stopping to communicate with me. I believe there is a need for the operation of emergency generator for times of electric service interruption. My parents own an emergency generator and trust me would be one of the first ones to operate it if the electricity goes off. However, I believe the continuous operation of a generator to concert, to circumvent the local electric utility and to support nefarious activity falls under the description of "other sound-producing device capable of emitting noise" in violation of Henry County Ordinance thirteen dash two hundred. Therefore, I stand before you tonight requesting a review of Henry County Ordinance thirteen dash two hundred by the Board of Supervisors under the guidance of the county attorney that noise emanating from a generator operating continuously can be in a, be an enforceable violation. I further believe if this review occurs and a col- conclusion reached that a violation is occurring, it will assist the Office of Planning and Zoning, the Henry County Sheriff's Office, and ultimately the citizens of Henry County. Thank you for allowing me to address the board regarding this important matter. Good evening.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public? Seeing, uh, no hands of anyone else, uh, Mr. Paul, do you have any other, uh, business for the board's consideration tonight?
Yes, sir.
Board members, do you have any other business for, uh, that we need to take up tonight?
Yes.
With that, I'll call, uh, for a motion for adjournment. Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Everyone have a good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight.